राम 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 हरे हरे हे कृष्णा धन्यवाद प्रणाम स्त्री देवती थैंक यू फॉर जॉइनिंग इन फॉर डी स्टडी सेशन टुडे विल स्टार्ट विद प्रेम श्री चैतन्य मनोबिष्टम स्थापितम यह न भूतले स्वयं रूप कदामयं ददाती स्वापदांतिकम वंदेहम श्री गुरु श्री उद्धव कमलम श्री गुरु उन वैश्ववंश श्री रूपम सागरजातम सहगन रघुनाथान्तम तम सजीवम साधवेतम सावधूतम परिजना सरितम श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य देवम श्री राधा कृष्ण पादान सहगन ललिता श्री विशाल कान्तितम नमो विष्णु पादाय अ कृष्ण प्रेष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमते भक्ति वे नामत स्वामी निधि नामीने नमस्ते सरस्वते देवे गौरवाणी प्रचारिने निर्विश शुन्यवारी पास चक्कर देश तारिने नमो महावधन्याय कृष्ण प्रेम प्रथायते कृष्णाय कृष्ण चैतन्य नामी गौर रुशी नमः पंचतत्व आदम कम कृष्णम भक्त रूप स्वरूप कम भक्तावतारम भक्ताक्यम नमामी भक्त शक्तिकम हे कृष्णा करुणा सिंधो दीन बंधो जगत पते गोपीश गोपिका कांत राधा कांत नमो सुते तप्तकांचना गौरंगी राधे वृंदावनी श्वरी विश्वभानु सुते देवी रणमान हरि प्रिय पांचा कल्पत रूप यश्चा कृपा सिंधु बये बचा पदीता नाम पावनी ब्यो पैश्वन वे ब्यो नमो नमः जय श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य प्रभु नित्यानंद श्री अद्वैत कदाधर श्रीवा सारी गौर भक्त वृंदावन हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे पुरवे गौर चंद्राय राधिकाय धरालय कृष्णाय कृष्ण भक्ताय तत्वक्ताय नमो नमः मुकाम करो तिवाचालम पंगुम लंगयते गिरीम दत्त कृपा तमहम वंदे श्री गुरु दिनतारिनम प्रमाणंदम आदवम श्री कृष्ण चैतन्य मिश्रण हरियो तत्सत हरे कृष्णा स्वतंत्र प्रणाम स्त्री देवती थैंक यू फॉर जॉइनिंग इन सो वी आर कंटिन्यूइंग विद चैप्टर नंबर टू ऑफ बगवत गीता सो वी जॉइन चैप्टर नंबर टू लाइक वी रिवाइज्ड यस्टरडे फ्रॉम चैप्टर वन सो चैप्टर वन लीड्स तू चैप्टर टू वेयर इन अर्जुन इस गिविंग सो मेनी रीजंस व्हाय आई शुड नॉट बी फाइटिंग डी बैटल एंड व्हाट आर डी वैरीयस रीजंस फॉर विच आई शुड गो बेगिंग आई शुड गो इन डी फॉरेस्ट एंड लिव माय लाइफ बाय बेगिंग रदर दें फाइट दिस वॉर व्हिच इस नॉट अट ऑल डिसायरेबल लाइक डेट एंड दें इन चैप्टर टू वी सी हो कृष्णा प्लेसेस डी चरित्र ट्रैडिकली इन बिटवीन बोथ डी आर्मीज एंड इन दिस वे अर्जुन आईएस विबिल्डर्ड एंड दिस वाज कृष्णा स्प्लान राइट डी डेवोटी इस एक्चुअली आर इंस्ट्रूमेंट्स इन लॉर्ड्स प्लान डेट्स व्हाय अर्जुन आई इस अन प्योर डेवोटी ऑफ डी लॉर्ड एंड इस बेकमिंग इन इंस्ट्रूमेंट फॉर कृष्णा डिलीवर दिस बगवत गीता तू ऑल ऑफ अस राइट सो कृष्णा प्लेसेस डी चरित्र इन सच वे डी अर्जुन आई विबिल्डर्ड एंड अर्जुन आई सेज आई विल नॉट फाइट एंड ऑफ कोर्स वी सॉल्व डी कंपैरिसन बिटवीन कंपैशन एंड हरदिया दौर बल्लियम राइट करुणा एंड हरदिया दौर बल्लियम डेवोटी इस जनरली कंपैशनेट इट इस वन ऑफ डी व्हाट यू कॉल ओर्नामेंट्स ऑफ डी डेवोटी इस ऑल दिस वंडरफुल क्वालिटीज लाइक क्यूमिलिटी कंपैशन पेशेंस टॉलरेंस ऑल ऑफ दिस बट इन डी नेक्स्ट पैराग्राफ और डी नेक्स्ट परपोड प्रोपाद सेज इस हरदिया दौर बल्लियम बिकॉज़ दिस कंपैशन शुड नॉट कम इन डी वे ऑफ परफॉर्मेंस ऑफ अवर ड्यूटीज असे इन दिस वे प्रोपाद एक्चुअली किप्स ऑन गिविंग अस डी परपोड्स ऑफ दिस वर्सेस व्हिच हेल्प इन अवर अंडरस्टैंडिंग राइट फ्रॉम चैप्टर वन और अस फॉर डी कन्वर्सेशन बिटवीन कृष्ण अर्जुन आर कंसर्न कृष्णा सिंपली हेयरिंग तू व्हाटएवर अर्जुन आई हैस तू से सो इन दिस वे कृष्णा किप्स ऑन हेयरिंग उनटिल अर्जुन आई सरेंडर्स सो अर्जुन आई सरेंडर्स ऑन दिस हिस्टोरिकल वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट वर्स व्हिच टॉक्स अबाउट शिष्यस्तयाहम शादी माम त्वम प्रपण्णम आई सरेंडर तू लॉर्ड कृष्णा आई एम वेरी कन्फ्यूज प्लीज लेट मी नो व्हाट आई एम सपोज्ड तू डू एंड इन डेट वे व्हेन अर्जुन आई सरेंडर्ड दें लॉर्ड श्री कृष्णा स्टार्टेड स्पीकिंग एंड व्हाट इस व्हाट इस आई एड्रेस अर्जुन आई आस अन फूल राइट यू आर गिविंग सो मेनी रीजंस बट दिस आर नॉट डी थिंग्स डेट अन सोबर पर्सन और अर्जुन हु इस इन्लाइटेंट और अन पर्सन हु इस नॉलेजेबल विल एक्चुअली वेरी फॉर राइट गिव सो मेनी रीजंस देही नवस्मन्यता देहे कौमारम योवनम जरा जस्ट लाइक देयर आर डिफरेंट स्टेजेस विदिन अन पर्टिकुलर बॉडी लाइक सम्बरी इस बोर्न एंड दें ग्रोज एंड दें प्रोड्यूसर बाय प्रोडक्ट्स एंड दें बिकम्स ओल्ड एंड बिकम एंड डाइज सिमिलरली ऑल दिस चेंजेस अकरिंग विदिन डी बॉडी एंड आते पर्टिकुलर स्टेज डी बॉडी इट्सेल्फ इस चेंज एंड अन सोबर पर्सन इस नॉट विबिल्डर्ड बाय सच अन चेंज लाइक डेट एंड सो मेनी थिंग्स राइट देयर इस नॉट नीड तू देयर इस नॉट नीड तू लामेंट फॉर डी बॉडी बिकॉज़ इफ यू आर थिंकिंग डेट डी बॉडी इस जस्ट मेड ऑफ केमिकल्स एंड दें हु विल लामेंट जस्ट लॉस अन फ्यू केमिकल्स एंड इफ यू अंडरस्टैंड डेट यू नो जीवा आस अन सोल एंड जीवा जस्ट चेंज इस बॉडी एवरी टाइम उनटिल डी जीवा परफेक्ट इस लाइफ दें अलसो देयर इस नॉट नीड फॉर लामेंटेशन इन एथर केस कृष्णा टेल्स अर्जुन आई देयर इस नॉट नीड फॉर लामेंटेशन राइट एंड दें आई अलसो टॉक्स अबाउट डी डी डिफरेंसेस बिटवीन बॉडी एंड सोल एंड डी डिफरेंस बिटवीन डी सोल एंड डी सुपरसोर अलसो राइट बॉडी एंड सोल आई सेज डी बॉडी इस नॉट पेरिस डी सोल इस नॉट पेरिसिबल इस नॉट इस नॉट किल्ड बाय अनी वेपन इस नॉट विदर्ड बाय डी विंड आई इस नॉट बर्न्ड इन फायर वेयर इस डी बॉडी इस इस विदर्ड बाय डी विंड इस बर्न्ड बाय फायर राइट डेट्स हो दे क्रिमेट डी बॉडी राइट मोस्ट ऑफ मोस्ट ऑफ यू नो डी हिंदूज अट लिस्ट दे वरी अन नो दे सॉरी दे दे बर्न डी बॉडी लाइक डेट राइट सो डी फिजिकल बॉडी व्हाटएवर इस बोर्न इस सब्जेक्ट तू डेथ एंड व्हाटएवर इस डेड डेड मैटर हस तू बी हस तू यू नो हस तू लाइक फॉर एग्जांपल डी सोल राइट डी सोल इस गिवन अप डी बॉडी डी सोल विल टेक अप अनदर बॉडी सो देयर इस नॉट नीड तू लामेंट फॉर सच अन चेंज इन डी बॉडी लाइक डेट कृष्णा गिव्स सो मेनी सो मेनी वर्सेस गिविंग डी डिस्टिंक्शन बिटवीन डी बॉडी इन डी सोल राइट अंतवंत एमी दिया निक्की शोकता शरीर इन हाथ राइट डी बॉडी इस डी बॉडी इस डिस्ट्रक्टेबल डी सोल इस इंडिस्ट्रक्टेबल डी डी लिविंग एंटिटी वी अलसो स्पोक अबाउट हो डी एक्सपायरी डेट इस देयर राइट व्हेनेवर वी बाय समथिंग फ्रॉम डी मार्केट देयर इस एन एक्सपायरी डेट इस रिटन बिकॉज़ इट्स अन जड़ राइट इट्स अन मटेरियल ऑब्जेक्ट सो एनीथिंग व्हिच इस बोर्न हैज एन एक्सपायरी डेट वेदर इट इस डी बॉडी वेदर इट इस सुगर वेदर इट इस सॉल्ट व्हाटएवर वी बाय राइट देयर इस एन एक्सपायरी डेट इस रिटन ऑन डी कवर बट वी डोंट हैव एन एक्सपायरी डेट रिटन ऑन अवर बॉडी बट डी एक्सपायरी डेट इस ऑलरेडी डिटरमाइंड हेंस तू तू लामेंट ओवर डी लॉस ऑफ डी मटेरियल बॉडी इस नॉट अन इंटेलिजेंट मैन तिकिंग इस व्हाट प्रोपाद इस अलसो एक्सप्लेनिंग वेरी डिटेल्ड इन डी वैरीयस परपोड्स राइट वाशाम जी जीरनानी यदाविहाय नवानिक्रनाथ नवरोपरानी जस्ट लाइक वी डोंट टिंक ट्वाइस व्हेन यू हैव तू डिसक्ट ओल्ड क्लोज एंड दें व्हेन व्हेन बाय न्यू क्लोज सिमिलरली वी डोंट हैव तू वरी सो मच व्हेन अन ओल्ड बॉडी इस डिसक्टेड एंड डी सोल एक्सेप्ट्स अन न्यू बॉडी लाइक डेट सो मेनी सो मेनी वर्सेस राइट वी वी कवर्ड राइट फ्रॉम 2.11 बट दें वी मूव्ड ऑन तू 30 31 अलसो राइट देही नित्यम अवध्ययं देहे सर्वस्य भारत जातसी ही द्रुव मृत्यु द्रुव जन्म मृत्यु चिचा राइट सो तस्मात अपरिहारियत्य नत्तूम शोषित मर्हसी अगेन प्रोपाद इस सेइंग अन डी परपोड डेट वन शुड कंटिन्यू तू परफॉर्म वन ड्यूटी एंड व्हाट इस कृष्णा अलसो टेलिंग इन डी अनवॉयडेबल डिसचार्ज ऑफ योर ड्यूटी यू शुड नॉट लामेंट राइट एंड दें वी अलसो वी अलसो स्पोक अबाउट ब्रह्मभूता प्रसन्न आत्मा न शोचती न गांखशती समसर विषु भूतेषु मत भक्ति लबते परम इन डी प्लेटफार्म ऑफ नो हैंकरिंग एंड नो लामेंटिंग डेट इस डी बेस्ट प्लेटफार्म विच प्रोपाद अलसो मेंशंस इन डी परपोड राइट इट इस डेट पर्टिकुलर प्लेटफार्म वेयर वी कैन इंगेज इन डिवोशनल सर्विस बिकॉज़ इफ यू कंटिन्यूएसली लामेंटिंग और हैंकरिंग फॉर थिंग्स दें वेयर विल वी गेट डी टाइम तू परफॉर्म डिवोशनल सर्विस राइट सो बट बट ऑफ कोर्स एंड दें प्रोपाद अलसो मेंशंस अबाउट डी फोर काइंस ऑफ पीपल हु वांट समथिंग डी अलसो इंगेज इन डी प्रोसेस ऑफ डिवोशनल सर्विस एंड प्रोपाद अलसो मेंशंस देयर डेट इस अलसो वेरी वेरी गुड व्हाय इस इट गुड अट लिस्ट दे डोंट गो तू डेमीगॉड्स राइट अट लिस्ट अकाम सर्वकाम हुआ मोक्षकाम उदारी तीव्रयन भक्ति योगेन यजेता पुरुषम परम अट लिस्ट दे कम तू डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ बॉडी एंड दें फाइनली वी सॉल्व डेट डी मर्सी ऑफ कृष्णा इस एक्सेसिबल थ्रू डी डेवोटीज राइट डेट इस व्हाय इट इस वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट तू तू प्लीज डी ग्रेटेस्ट डेवोटी ऑफ डी लॉर्ड और प्लीज स्पिरिचुअल मास्टर हु इस नॉन डिफरेंट फ्रॉम डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ बॉडी बिकॉज़ इफ वन कैन अंडरस्टैंड डी सब्जेक्ट मैटर ऑफ डी सोल वन कैन अंडरस्टैंड ट्रांसेंडेंटल सब्जेक्ट मैटर्स ओनली अंडर डी गाइडेंस ऑफ अन प्योर डेवोटी एंड नॉट इन अनी अदर वे डेट्स व्हाट वी सॉल्व एंड दें एंड दें या वी अलसो सॉल्व अबाउट डी फोर डिफरेंट क्लासेस राइट ब्राह्मण शत्रिया वैश्व शुद्र राइट वी सेड डेट देयर इस अन प्रिस्क्रिप्ट ड्यूटी फॉर एवरी क्लास ऑफ पीपल राइट शत्रिया इस त्रायत त्रायत इस मींस तू गिव प्रोटेक्शन एंड शत मींस तू सम्बरी हु इस हु इस हर्ट राइट सो शत्रिया व्हाट इस यू डू गिव्स प्रोटेक्शन तू सच अन पर्सन एंड ब्राह्मण व्हाट इस यू डू इट इस वाद्याय इस स्टडीज वेदिक स्क्रिप्चर्स एंड इन दिस वे आई एक्चुअली गिव्स इस नॉलेज तू एवरीबॉडी राइट सो इन दिस वे देयर आर डिफरेंट ड्यूटीज डेट आर डेट आर एक्चुअली देयर फॉर डी इच क्लास एंड दिस वर्ण एंड आश्रम आर डी वी डिटरमाइंड अकॉर्डिंग तू वंस गुण एंड कर्म एंड नॉट अकॉर्डिंग तू बर्थ एंड दें वी अलसो सॉल्व अबाउट विषय विनिवर्तन ते राइट डी वैरीयस अष्टंग योगा प्रोसेस लाइक यमा नियमा प्रणयमा प्रत्याहारा ज्ञान धारणा समाधि एक्सेटरा वेरी वेरी डिफिकल्ट तू परफॉर्म इन दिस आगे ऑफ कली सो व्हाट इस इट डेट वी नीड तू डू कृष्णा टेल्स इन 6.47 व्हिच इस अलसो इलेब्रेटेड हियर प्रोपाद सेज डी बेस्ट काइंड ऑफ योगी इस वन हु ऑलवेज इंगेजेस इन डी प्रोसेस ऑफ भक्ति योगा नॉट अन पर्सन हु आर्टिफिशली रेनाउंसेस राइट बिकॉज़ इफ यू आर्टिफिशली रेनाउंस अवर 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 माइंड विल स्टिल बी लिंगरिंग ऑन डी सेंस ऑब्जेक्ट एंड इन दिस केस वी विल नॉट बी एबिल तू परफॉर्म इवन डिवोशनल सर्विस एंड दें वी अलसो सॉल्व हो डी मटेरियल एंड स्पिरिचुअल नेचर्स और ऑल देयर इन्वर्सली प्रोपोर्शनल डी मोर वी आर अटैक्ड तू कृष्णा डी लेस विल बी अटैक्ड तू मटेरियल ऑब्जेक्ट्स राइट सो एंड वी आर वी आर नीदर प्रैक्टिशनर्स ऑफ नॉन वायलेंस नॉर आर वी प्रैक्टिशनर्स ऑफ वेजिटेरिनिज्म राइट वी आर नॉट प्रैक्टिसिंग एकदम ऑफ डेम वी आर प्रैक्टिसिंग कृष्णा कांश्वेसनेस डेट मींस वी यूटिलाइज एवरीथिंग इन डी सर्विस ऑफ डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ बॉडी एंड डेट इस डी ओनली क्रिटेरिया लाइक डेट अलराइट सो आई वी विल स्टार्ट विद टेक्स्ट नंबर 58 या या वेयर इन डी लास्ट परपोड प्रोपाद अलसो एक्सप्लेन्स हो व्हाट इस समाधि समाधि मींस मींस बिकमिंग फर्मली सिचुएटेड इन डी प्रैक्टिस ऑफ कृष्णा कांश्वेसनेस इन डेट वी एंडेड सो लेट्स कंटिन्यू टेक्स्ट नंबर 58 लेट मी शेयर माय स्क्रीन डेवोटीज वांट रीड कैन रेज योर हैंड्स एंड दें वी विल कंटिन्यू विद टेक्स्ट नंबर 58 वी विल ट्राई तू सी इफ यू कैन कंप्लीट दिस चैप्टर टुडे ओके ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय टेक्स्ट नंबर 58 यदा समहरते चायम कूर्मोंगानी व सर्वश इंद्रियानी इंद्रयारते व्यस्त स्प्रक्ति आप प्रतिष्ठित या सो ओके वैन सेकंड लेट मी जस्ट सी होर ऑल देयर एंड इफ एनीबरी इस रेज डी हैंड्स आई कैन स्टार्ट रीडिंग हो सेड निवान ओके करपकावली माता जी गो है
इस माता जी परपोड माता जी
ट्रांसलेशन एंड परपोड
ट्रांसलेशन ट्रांसलेशन बिफर प्रपाद की जय वन हु इस एबिल तू वन हु इस एबिल तू विट्रो इस सेंसेस फ्रॉम डी फ्रॉम सेंस ऑब्जेक्ट्स आज डी टॉर्टोइस ड्रॉस इट्स लिंक्स विदिन डी शिल इस फर्मली फिक्स्ड इन परफेक्ट कांश्वेसनेस प्रपत डी परपत बाय डी टेक्स्ट टेक्स्ट टेस्ट ऑफ डी योगी डेवोटी और सेल्फ रिलाइज डोल इस डेट आई इस एबिल तू कंट्रोल डी सेंसेस अकॉर्डिंग तू इस प्लान मोस्ट पीपल होवर अस्तर एंड सिर्फ डी सेंसेस एंड डेट डेट डिफरेंट डी फिक्शन ऑफ डी सेंसेस डेट इस डी आंसर तू डी क्वेश्चन आते हो डी योगी इस इक्वेटेड डी सेंसेस आर कंपैर्टी वेनिमस सरपंच दे वांट तू एक्टिविटी डूस डी विदाउट एंड विदाउट डी स्टिक डी रिस्ट्रिक्शन
लोट डी डिस्टर्बेंस हो स्पीकिंग
सॉरी डेवोटी और डेवोटी हस बी वेरी स्ट्रांग तू कंट्रोल डी सरपंच लाइक एस मेक चार्म इस नेवर अलोस डेंट एक्ट इंडिपेंडेंटली देयर आर मेनी इंटेक्शंस इन डी विल स्क्रिप्चर्स सम ऑफ डेम आर डू डू नॉट आर सम ऑफ डेम आर डू अनलेस वन इस एबिल तू फॉलो डूस एंड डू नॉट सिक्स इन वन सेल्फ ऑन सेंस अट जामेंट इट इस नॉट पॉसिबल तू बी फर्मली फिक्स्ड डी कृष्णा कांश्वेसनेस डेट इस एक्सेंपल यर इस डी टॉर्टोइस टॉर्टोइस कैन आते अनी मोमेंट फाइंड अप डी सेंसेस एक्सिबिटीज डेट अगेन एंड सम टाइम फॉर पर्टिकुलर परपोड सिमिलरली डी सेंसेस ऑफ डी कृष्णा कांश्वेसनेस आर यूज्ड ओनली फॉर सम पर्टिकुलर परपोड डिसर्वर्स ऑफ डी लॉर्ड एंड डेट विच चॉन्ट अन अदरवाइज अर्जुन आई बीटिंग चॉन्ट केयर तू यूज्ड इस सेंसेस फॉर डी सर्विस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड इस इस फॉर हिस ओन फॉर सेटिस्फेक्शन कीपिंग डी सेंसेस ऑलवेज इन डी सर्विस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड डी एक्सेंपल सेट डी एनलिटी ऑफ डी टॉर्टोइस तू कीप डी सेंसेस बिटवीन
थैंक यू थैंक यू माता जी अरे बोल या सो इन दिस पर्टिकुलर परपोड प्रोपाद वेरी ब्यूटीफुली गिव्स डी एग्जांपल ऑफ डी टॉर्टोइस राइट सो जनरली डेट इस व्हाट इवन डेवोटीज
But one who has tasted the beauty of the Supreme Lord Krishna in the course of this advancement in Krishna consciousness no longer has a taste for dead material things. Therefore restrictions are there for the less intelligent and new fits in the spirit, in the in the spiritual advancement of life. But such restrictions are only good until one actually has a taste for Krishna consciousness. When one is actually Krishna conscious, he automatically loses his taste for pale things.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, right? So the same point Prabhupada is reiterating here, right? Paramtrishtva, nirvartate, right? We don't have to, like for example, if somebody is new in Krishna consciousness, right? We are not asking him, right? Are you following the related principles, right? Are you eating meat etcetera? No, when somebody comes to the temple, what do we do? We just ask the person to chant Hare Krishna, right? In fact, they give out one bead, one mala also to the new person who's come for the first time. We give him Krishna prasadam and then we give that person one mala and ask that person to chant. One round of Hare Krishna mantra, we tell that person how to move the beads. And then you ask that person if you'd like to take a chanting, take the chanting mala, right? Take one bead like that, right? So we are not asking the person to give up anything in the first instance, right? And that's how we also became Krishna conscious. We left a lot of things like coffee, tea, onion garlic etcetera, but nobody asked us to leave. Nobody told us in the first place that you have to immediately leave all these things, right? What did they tell us? They gave us a book of Prabhupada, they gave us Bhagavad Gita. They asked us to come and come to this Korn Temple every Sunday. And then we started slowly slowly chanting one round, two rounds like that. And in this way, we got a taste for the chanting Hare Krishna mantra. And when we got a taste for chanting Hare Krishna mantra, then slowly 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 all the other things. We become open to changing our life, transforming our life. In that way, what will happen? All these unnecessary things, like what are the, you know, the, what do you call the yamas, right? Whatever are things to be given up, automatically we will give up all those things. We don't have to endeavor to give up those things. We simply need to endeavor to develop a taste for Krishna consciousness. Develop a taste to practice those things which enable us to advance in Krishna consciousness. And the rest of it, whatever is required to be given up, will be given up automatically in the association of devotees and by the mercy of Guru and Krishna, right? Alright, so let's move forward, next verse, we'll read. Text number sixty. Translation by Shri La Prabhupada.
Hare Krishna Mataji, I wanted to ask you, yesterday we finished thirty-sixth shloka.
So we finished until the one before the analogy of tortoise, right?
No, no. Yesterday thirty-fifth or thirty-sixth shloka we've completed.
Okay, okay, one second. Well, there's some problem with my, you know, the coloring thing which I use to track. Just give me one second.
Because my page is open till thirty-six, so.
Hmm, okay, 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 hmm. Yeah, yeah, but I think, you know, we summarized it. So let's quickly go through that, I'll just quickly summarize that part of it. Hmm, okay, because in mind, it shows no color from thirty-two to considering a specific, okay, we saw about the duties of a Shatrya. We also saw the duty of a Brahmana and all. Yeah, happy are the Shatryas who, to whom fighting opportunities come. So we also spoke about how anyone who performs a duty and dies in the battlefield, he will be able to go, you know, to higher destination. We also spoke about Pasupa Tastra. Yeah, we spoke about that. And dishonor is worse than death for a Shatrya, that also we saw. Yeah, we saw this also, where, you know, Arjuna, Prabhupada also mentioned in the purport. How, you know, the generals like Duryodana and Karan also will think that Arjuna is, you know, going back from the war because of fear and not out of compassion. Yeah, we saw that. Your enemies will scorn and what could be more painful for you, that also we saw. Yeah, so yeah, actually in themes we covered, either you will be killed or you'll conquer the earthly kingdom, in either ways get up and fight, yeah. And then we also saw this, we also saw this. We saw this also. This is verse number, this is verse number thirty-eight. Yeah, we saw this also. That in happiness and in distress, one should not give up performing one's duty. Right? One has to continue performing duty and we also read this. So this is also done, then. Ah, okay, okay. Yeah, so I think we'll have to, we have to start from text number thirty-nine.
Yeah. Thirty-eight also, we've not done, Mataji, thirty-eight also we have not done. We finished till thirty-six, I'm sure you.
Okay, alright, so let's do one thing, let's start from thirty. Yeah, one second, I don't see any coloring, I don't know what happened here.
I've marked my book in thirty, yeah, Sindhu Mataji is saying the same thing, thirty-six.
Okay, so Lord Krishna continued to give us verdict, you know, do not think with the great generals like Duryodana, Karan, this we saw. Okay, so let's start from thirty-six then, okay? Okay Mataji, go ahead, from thirty-six on. So let's, even if we've done a couple of these verses, we go to reread. Or if we've not read again, better to read. Alright, so let me share my screen, you start from text number thirty-six. Yes.
Yeah, translation, translation by his divine grace, Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jai. Your enemies will describe you in many unkind words and scorn your ability. What could be more painful for you? Lord Krishna was astonished in the beginning at Arjuna's uncalled-for plea for compassion. And he described his compassion as befitting the non-Aryan. Now in so many words, he has proved his statements against Arjuna's so-called compassion. Hare Krishna Mataji, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, Mataji, you can go ahead. See, because the next couple of verses is all he's going to talk about. If Arjuna leaves the war, then what will happen, right? Nobody will glorify him, that he is actually becoming compassionate on the, on his enemies and he's going. It is better to, you know, go and beg rather than fight this war. But Prabhupada is saying that everybody will consider him a non-Aryan or they will consider him as a coward, like that. Okay, go ahead.
Translation, oh son of Kunti, either you will be killed on the battlefield and attain the heavenly planets or you will conquer and enjoy the earthly kingdom. Therefore get up with determination and fight. Purport, even though there was no certainty of victory for Arjuna's side, he still had to fight for even being killed there, he could be elevated into the heavenly planets. Hare Krishna.
Yeah, go ahead Mataji.
Translation, do you do the fight for the sake of fighting without considering happiness or distress, loss or gain, victory or defeat? And by so doing, you shall never incur sin. Purport, Lord Krishna now directly says that Arjuna should fight for the sake of fighting because he desires the battle. There is no consideration of happiness or distress, profit or loss, victory or defeat in the activities of Krishna consciousness. That everything should be performed for the sake of Krishna is transcendental consciousness. So there is no reaction to material activities. He who acts for his own sense gratification either in goodness or in passion is subject to the reaction, good or bad. But he who has completely surrendered himself in the activities of Krishna consciousness is no longer obliged to anyone, nor is he a debtor to anyone, as one is in the ordinary course of activities. It is said, Deva Shibhutap, sorry Mataji, can you read this? Anyone who has completely surrendered into Krishna, Mukunda, giving up all other duties is no longer a debtor, nor is he obliged to anyone, nor the demigods, nor the sages, nor the people in general, nor kinsmen, nor humanity, nor forefathers. Bhagavatam eleventh canto, fifth chapter, forty-first verse. That is the indirect hint given by Krishna to Arjuna in this verse and the matter will be more clearly explained in the following verses. Hare Krishna Mataji.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Sudha Mataji, go ahead.
Translation and purport by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jai. Thus far, I have described this knowledge to you through analytical study. Now listen as I explain it in terms of working without fruitful results. Oh son of Pritha, when you act in such knowledge, you can free yourself from the bondage of works. Purport, according to the Nirukti or the Vedic Kishnani, sankhya means that which describes things in deep grave and sankhya refers to that philosophy which describes the real nature of the soul. And yoga involves controlling the senses. Arjuna's proposal not to fight was based on sense gratification. Forgetting his prime duty, he wanted to cease fighting because he thought that by not killing his relatives and kinsmen, he would be happier than by enjoying the kingdom after conquering his cousins and brothers, the sons of Nidrash. In both ways, the basic principles were for sense gratification. Happiness derived from conquering them and happiness derived by seeing kingsmen alive are both on the basis of personal sense gratification. Even at the sacrifice of wisdom and duty. Krishna therefore wanted to explain to Arjuna that by killing the body of his grandfather, he would not be killing the soul proper. And he explained that all individual persons, including the Lord himself, are eternal individuals. They were individuals in the past, they are individuals in the present and they will continue to remain individuals in the future because all of us are individual souls eternal. We simply change our bodily dress in different manners but actually we keep our individuality even after liberation from the bondage of material dress. An analytic study of the soul and the body has been very perfectly explained by Lord Krishna. And this descriptive knowledge of the soul and the body from different angles of vision has been described here as sankhya in terms of the Nirukti Kishnani. This sankhya has nothing to do with the sankhya philosophy of the atheist Kapila. Long before the prisoner Kapila sankhya, the sankhya philosophy was expounded in the Shrimath Bhagavatam by the true Lord Kapila, the incarnation of Lord Krishna, who explained it to his mother Deva Huthi. It is clearly explained by him that the Purusha or the Supreme Lord is active and that he creates by looking over the Prakriti. This is accepted in the Vedas and in the Gita. The description in the Vedas indicates that the Lord glanced over the Prakriti or nature and impregnated it with atomic individual souls. All these individuals are working in the material world for sense gratification and under the spell of material energy, they are thinking of being enjoyed. This mentality is dragged to the last point of liberation when the living entity wants to become one with the Lord. This is the last snare of Maya or sense gratificatory illusion and it is only after many, many bursts of such sense gratificatory activities that a great soul surrenders unto Vasudevah, Lord Krishna, thereby fulfilling the search after the ultimate truth. Arjuna has already accepted Krishna as a spiritual master by surrendering himself unto him. Shishya steham, shaadi maam, thramprapanna. Consequently, Krishna will now tell him about the working process in Buddha yoga or karma yoga or in other words, the practice of devotional service only for the sense gratification of the Lord. This Buddha yoga is clearly explained in chapter ten, verse ten as being direct communion with the Lord, who is sitting as paramatma in everyone's heart. But such communion does not take place without devotional service. One who is therefore situated in devotional or transcendental loving service to the Lord or in other words, in Krishna consciousness, attains to this stage of Buddha yoga by the special grace of the Lord. The Lord says therefore that only to those who are always engaged in devotional service out of transcendental love, does he award the pure knowledge of devotion in love. In that way, the devotee can reach him easily in the ever blissful kingdom of God. Thus, the Buddha yoga mentioned in this verse is the devotional service of the Lord and the word sankhya mentioned herein has nothing to do with the atheistic sankhya yoga initiated by the imposter Kapila. One should not therefore misunderstand that the sankhya yoga mentioned herein has any connection with the atheistic sankhya. Nor did that philosophy have any influence during that time, nor would Lord Krishna care to mention such godless philosophical speculations. Clear sankhya philosophy is described by Lord Kapila in the Shrimath Bhagavatam. But even that sankhya has nothing to do with the current topics. Here sankhya means analytical description of the body and the soul. Lord Krishna made an analytical description of the soul just to bring Krishna to the point of, just to, sorry, just to bring Arjuna to the point of Buddha yoga or bhakti yoga. Therefore, Lord Krishna's sankhya and Lord Kapila's sankhya, as described in the Bhagavatam, are one and the same. They are all bhakti yoga. Lord Krishna said therefore that only the less intelligent class of men make a distinction between sankhya yoga and bhakti yoga. Of course, atheistic sankhya yoga has nothing to do with bhakti yoga. Yet the unintelligent claim that the atheistic sankhya yoga is referred to in the Bhagavat Gita. One should therefore understand that Buddha yoga means to work in Krishna consciousness in the full bliss and knowledge of devotional service. One who works for the satisfaction of the Lord only, however difficult such work may be, is working under the principles of Buddha yoga and finds himself always in transcendental bliss. By such transcendental engagement, one achieves all transcendental understanding automatically by the grace of the Lord and thus his liberation is complete in itself without his making extraneous endeavors to acquire knowledge. There is much difference between work in Krishna consciousness and work for fruitful results, especially in the matter of sense gratification for achieving results in term of family or material happiness. Buddha yoga is therefore the transcendental quality of the work that we perform. Thank you Mataji, Hare Krishna.
Thank you, Hare Krishna, thank you so much. Right? Very, very lengthy purport, at the same time, very important messages in this purport. So basically, Prabhupada is talking about two kinds of yogas, right? Here, he is talking about sankhya yoga and is also talking about Buddha yoga, right? Sankhya, sorry, sankhya yoga means jnana yoga, right? That means when you're doing certain work, we perform it with the proper knowledge, but not by the understanding that this sankhya philosophy is given by atheistic Kapila, not like that. But according to what is given in this Bhagavad Gita itself with the transcendental purports of Prabhupada and also what was described as sankhya yoga by the son of Deva Huthi, right? Kapil, Kapil Dev, right? Who is also the incarnation of the supreme personality of Godhead. Now he also gave this. And the second part of that is, one is jnana, that means we get it in our head. That is what is sankhya yoga. The second part of getting this knowledge, what is that? That is called buddhi. Buddhi yoga, buddhi means wisdom. That means we know a lot of things, but are we utilizing that knowledge to to work in a way that is pleasing to Gurman Goranga? That is what is buddhi yoga and that is also called karma yoga. Karma means activities. Are we performing our activities in the knowledge of what we've received from the Guru Parampara? In the knowledge of Bhagavad Gita? If you are doing our activities in accordance with the Bhagavad Gita, then that is called karma yoga or it is also called as buddhi yoga. That means we've gotten knowledge, we've received the knowledge and we are utilizing that knowledge to work in a way that is pleasing to Krishna. That way, knowledge becomes wisdom. Knowledge is in the head, wisdom is percolates through the heart and transforms our life. Those are the important two terms used here. So sankhya yoga is the same as jnana yoga, which is knowledge. Whereas buddhi yoga is also called karma yoga, that means it is knowledge in action. Right? We are, in the next fifth chapter says karma yoga, action and Krishna consciousness. So that is what is exactly karma yoga. That means how do we work in a way that is pleasing to Gurman Goranga, that's what it is. Alright, so let's move to text number forty. Okay, Sindhu Mataji, go ahead. Translation by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jai. Sindhu Mataji, Yodhe?
Hare Krishna, yes Mataji, yes. Text forty.
In this endeavor?
In this translation by his divine grace, Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jai. In this endeavor, there is no loss or diminution and a little advancement on this path can protect one from the most dangerous type of fear. Activity in Krishna consciousness or acting for the benefit of Krishna without expectation of sense gratification is the highest transcendental quality of work. Even a small beginning of such activity finds no impediment, nor can that small beginning be lost at any stage. Any work begun on the material plane has to be completed. Otherwise, the whole attempt becomes a failure. But any work begun in Krishna consciousness has a permanent effect, even though not finished. The performer of such work is therefore not at a loss even if his work in Krishna consciousness is incomplete. One percent done in Krishna consciousness bears permanent results so that the next beginning is from the point of two percent whereas in material activity without a hundred percent success, there is no profit. Ajamilah performed his duty in some percentage of Krishna consciousness but the result he enjoyed at the end was a hundred percent by the grace of the Lord. There is a nice verse in this connection in Shrimath Bhagavatam, one point five point seventeen. If someone gives up his occupational duties and works in Krishna consciousness and then falls down on account of not completing his work, what loss is there on his part? And what can one gain if one performs his material activities perfectly? Or as the Christians say, what profit a man if he gains? The whole world yet suffers the loss of his eternal soul. Material activities and their results end with the body. But work in Krishna consciousness carries a person again to Krishna consciousness even after the loss of the body. At least one is sure to have a chance in the next life of being born again as a human being either in the family of a great cultured Brahmana or in a rich aristocratic family that will give one a further chance for elevation. That is a unique quality of work done in Krishna consciousness.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, thank you. So we were discussing this, I don't know in what context, but we're talking about how, you know, if one is a chartered accountant or a doctor or an engineer, right? All of those education will be valid only for this life or this particular body. Right? When the body is changed, then what happens? All of these qualifications become useless, right? Again, you have to start with, again, we have to start with, you know, Jack and Jill went up the hill, right? A, B, C, D, right? From there, you have to start. But Krishna consciousness is such that whatever, whatever is the advancement that we have done, we continue from there on. Why? Because the our asanas or our desires or our, what do you call? Our consciousness is carried through the subtle body and it also enters the, it enters the other gross body that is awaiting us in case we have not perfected our life. And in this way, we continue to try to fulfill our desire, right? And whatever are the desires that we have in our mind or we have in our heart, which is related to the service of the Lord, that never gets diminished because that will continue life after life. And I was also talking about how Prabhupada mentions, right? Prabhupada mentions, why, you know, what Krishna himself mentions that if a person has performed bhakti yoga for a long period of time but yet does not fulfill or does not perfect his life in a particular, in a particular body, then what happens? He gets a birth in the family of devotees and from there on, right from childhood, these, he or she is trained in performing the bhakti yoga process in terms of chanting, in terms of performing arati, abhishek and all these things, right? Studying Shri La Prabhupada's books, study of Bhagavad Gita etcetera. All of this continues because a person is born in a Vaishnava family. And how is a person born in a Vaishnava family? It is because of the sukhruti or the practice of devotional service that that person has done in his previous life. That is why Neha Vikravna Ashosthi, right? There is no nasha, there is no destruction in the level of bhakti or the bhakti performance that is done in any particular lifetime like that. Okay, let's move forward, text number forty-one. Okay, it looks like we've done all these verses. But in any case, since you all are saying it's not done, we will continue, that's okay. So it's okay to study a second time. So here we were discussing about vyavasa ayatmika buddhi, right? That means the intelligence is one focus, only in case of a devotee. Otherwise, we discuss how, you know, if one is not fixed in his mind, then what does he do? He goes from one demigod to another, fulfill his various desires, right? I was also saying, very clearly, I remember we were talking about one worshiping Shiva to get a beautiful wife, one worshiping Golat Ganeshad, remove all the obstacles. We're also talking about the Visa Temple in Chennai, right? Where you go and break a coconut, you know, thirty-five rupees coconut and you want thirty-five million job. A job that will give us thirty-five million. And you want, how much you want to spend? You want to spend thirty-five rupees for a coconut because poor Ganeshad, he cannot get coconuts, right? He is dependent on us for the coconuts, isn't it? Saying that, we, how many gods, demigods and goddesses will be satisfied? So our intelligence cannot be focused, but a devotee, his intelligence can be focused in only one place. That means he only works to satisfy Guru and Goranga. In that way, his intelligence is steadfast and it is focused like that. Okay, so somebody can read this, the couple of verses, next we'll be talking about that. Snehal Mataji, go ahead, those who are on this path.
Yes Mataji. Translation and purport given by Shri La Prabhupada, Shri La Prabhupada Ki Jai. Those who are on this path are resolute in purpose and their aim is one. Oh beloved child of gurus, the intelligence of those who are irresolute is in many branch, purport. A strong faith that by Krishna consciousness, one will be elevated to the highest perfection of life is called vyavasa ayatmika intelligence. Faith means unflinching trust in something sublime. When one is engaged in the duties of Krishna consciousness, he need not act in relationship to the material world with obligations to family traditions, humanity or nationality. Frutive activities are the engagements of one's reactions from past good or bad deeds. When one is awake in Krishna consciousness, he need no longer endure for good results in his activities. When one is situated in Krishna consciousness, all activities are on the absolute plane for they are no longer subject to dualities like good and bad. The highest perfection of Krishna consciousness is a renunciation of the material conception of life. This state is automatically achieved by progressive Krishna consciousness. The resolute purpose of a person in Krishna consciousness is best on knowledge. A person in Krishna consciousness is the rare good soul who knows perfectly that Vasudev or Krishna is the root of all manifested causes. As by watering the root of a tree, one automatically distributes water to the leaves and branches. So by acting in Krishna consciousness, one can render the highest service to everyone, namely self, family, society, country, humanity etcetera. If Krishna is satisfied by one's actions, then everyone will be satisfied. Service in Krishna consciousness is however best practice under the able guidance of a spiritual master who is a bona fide representative of Krishna, who knows the nature of the student and who can guide him to act in Krishna consciousness. As such, to be well versed in Krishna consciousness, one has to act firmly and obey the representative of Krishna and one should accept the instruction of the bona fide spiritual master as one's mission in life. Shri Le Vishwana Chakravarti Thakur instructs us in his famous prayer for the spiritual masters as follows. By satisfaction of the spiritual master, the supreme personality of Godhead becomes satisfied. And by not satisfying the spiritual master, there is no chance of being promoted to the plane to the plane of Krishna consciousness. I should therefore meditate and pray for his mercy three times a day and offer my respectful obeisances unto him, my spiritual master. The whole process however depends on perfect knowledge of the soul beyond the conception of a body, not theoretically but practically. When there is no longer a chance for sense gratification manifested in fruative activities. One who is not firmly fixed in mind is diverted by various types of fruative acts. Hare Krishna Mataji.
Thank you, thank you Mataji, Hare Krishna. So again, here in this particular verse, the same thing is detailed, right? For a devotee, he has only one goal to fulfill. Whereas vyavasa ayatmika, vyavasa ayatmika buddhi, ekaha kurunandana. Bahushaka, bahushaka means several branched. Bahushaka, hynantasya, buddhyaya, vyavasayina. Wait, somebody who is not a devotee, he wants to
Right? Somebody who is not a devotee, he wants to, ah he wants to ah worship different, different devatas in order to attain different, different results. So there is no focus, right? And then very important point also mentioned by Prabhupada in the purport here is only by pleasing the spiritual master. Yes, ya prasada, bhagavat prasadhu. If you are pleasing the spiritual master, then automatically we will please Krishna. Then at least three times a day, yahin sthum sasya, yeses three sandhyam, three sandhya kals. That means morning six o'clock, afternoon twelve o'clock and evening six o'clock, three sandhya kals. What are we supposed to do? We have to offer obeisances ah to our spiritual master. If we do not take an initiation, we should offer obeisances to Prabhu Pad. Now if you have taken initiation, you have to offer obeisances to our spiritual master and also to Prabhu Pad. Why? Because it is only by their mercy that we can understand the purpose of these transcendental knowledge, right? Why? Um say what is that verse? Tadviti pranipathena pariprashenasevaya. Upadikshanti tengyanam, jyani nas tatvadarshinaha. It is only by the mercy of guru and Prabhu Pad, right? And our siksha gurus, then then only we can understand these transcendental subject matters. No amount of mental speculation, no amount of academic education, no amount of intelligence, material intelligence will help us to understand these transcendental subject matters. The more we are humble, the more we are rendering service to our spiritual masters, the more the transcendental knowledge will be revealed in our heart like that. Okay, text number forty-two to forty-three, we'll end with this and then we'll start metro instruction. Yaa mimam pushpitam vaacham pravadanti evi paschitaha. Vedavadaratha partha na anyat asthiti va adinaha. Kamatmana swarga para janmakarma falap pradam. Kriya vishesh bahu lama, bogeshwar yagatim pratim. Okay, who wanted to read? Now Nagavini Mataji, go ahead. Okay.
Hare Krishna Mataji.
Hare Krishna. Yes Mataji, we're able to hear you.
Hare Krishna, Dhankavat Pranam to all transmitters. Uh men of uh men of small knowledge are very much attached to the um attached to the flowery worlds of the Vedas, which recommended various fructive act, fructive activities for elevation to heavenly planets. Resultant good birth, power and so forth being uh being desirous of sense gratification and opulent uh life, opulent life. They say that there is, there is nothing more than this. People in general, in general are not very intelligent and due to their ignorance, they are uh they are most attached to the fructive activities recommended in the karma ka, karma kanda, karma kanda portions of the Vedas. They do not want anything, anything more than sense gratification um proposals for enjoying life in heaven, where wine and human are available and material and material opulence is very common. In the Vedas, many sacrifices, many sacrifices are are recommended for elevation to the heavenly planets, especially the, especially the Jyotis, what is this?
Jyotis thoma sacrifices.
Jyotis thoma sacrifices. In fact, it is stated that anyone desiring elevation to heavenly planet must perform these sacrifices and men with a poor fund of, fund of knowledge uh think that this is the whole purpose of Vedic wisdom. It is very difficult to such inexperienced persons to be, to be situated in the determined action of Krishna consciousness. As rules, as fools are attached to the flowers of, flowers of persona's
Poisonous trees.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Poisonous trees without knowing, knowing the results of such attractions, attractions and enlightened men are similarly attracted by such heavenly opulence and the sense enjoyment thereof. In the karma kanda action, section of the Vedas, it is said, it is said
Soma amritta abhumah.
Uh oh ma, um in the, sorry, and
Shayam havay cha turma sya ya jina sukurtham bhavati. Other words?
In other word, those who perform the four month, four month penance become eligible to drink, drink the somrasa bravages to become immortal and happy forever. Even on this, even on this earth, some are very eager to have somrasa, uh somrasa to become strong and fit to enjoy sense gratification. Such persons are no, are no, uh such persons have no faith in liberation from material knowledge, from material bondage. And they are very much attached to the, to the pompous cerim- ceremony ceremonies of Vedic sacrifices. They are generally sensual and sexual and they do not want anything other, anything other than the heavenly pleasures of life. It is understood that there are, there are garden. Mataji, you're scrolling. There are gardens called nandana, nandana kanana in which there is good opportunity for association with angelic, beautiful woman and having a, having a profuse supply of, profuse supply of somrasa wine. Such bodily happiness is certainly sensual. Therefore, there are those who are purely attached in such material temporary happiness as lots of the material world.
Yeah, Hare Krishna. Thank you Madhuri.
Thank you so much.
Hare Krishna. Yeah. So here very Prabhupada clearly indicates, right? What are our goals? What are our desires, right? According to the desire, we will endeavor, isn't it? Why do we perform any endeavor? Because it gives us pleasure. Nobody does any endeavor to get misery, right? I won't feel miserable. That's why I want to do this particular activity. Nobody does that. Yeah, according to the goals that you want to fetch or the goals that you want to attain, accordingly we perform activities. If you want to top in the class, we study the academics. If you want to, if you want excellent singing, we practice, we know we practice adhana. That means early morning we practice. We ensure we don't take ice creams, you know, etc., etc. Whatever is required. If you are practicing Bharat Natiyam, then we need to remain fit, we need to remain, um uh you know focused on that practice, right? So similarly, if we want to enjoy now this material nature, which Krishna says is cannot be enjoyed because this place is meant for, meant for penance and rectification. Yet, if we want to enjoy this material world, there are things, right? Like, like happiness is absence of suffering, right? If we simply want to be happy in this material world, we will just be intertwined between happiness and distress. Matras parshastu konthea, situ rshna suka dukkada. Of course, we will get happiness and then again we will get dukkha. Like in this way, we will pass our life from one species to another, again, again rotting in this material world. So we need to decide what our goal is, right? And then if our goal is, you know, puna punas charvita charvana nam, right? Get good birth, get good power, be, be very beautiful, get lot of name and same, right? All that is very good, very enjoyable. But it will wrap us in this material world. It will make us situated in this particular material world, birth after birth after birth. And we don't even know how long we have been here, how long you're going to continue to be here. But yet, Prabhupada in his, by this wonderful purport, is actually giving us a choice, right? What is that choice? Either we make a choice to study the scriptures and transform our lives according to the injunctions of the scriptures and in this way we can go back home back to Godhead. Or else we can look at the karma kanda section of the Vedas and then happily perform. Now what, whatever is prescribed there, that also we can't perform perfectly. So somewhere together, if you're doing eighty percent, you will get some eighty percent result. What is eighty percent result? Happiness, right? That's so-called happiness. That means, you know, our body may not be diseased or we will not get, you know, very life threatening diseases etc. But you know, in any case, as long as it has been as a material body, like we discussed, it is subject to expiry, it is subject to destruction, isn't it? So like that. Alright, so let's move to um net of instruction now. Rantraakshri mat bhagavat Gita ki jai, jagatguru shri prabhupada guru devi ki jai. So quickly, I just want to give a recap because it's been a while since we did net of instruction. So net of instruction, we saw verse number one, which talk about the six urges that we have to control. Vaachavegam, manasa krodevegam, jibaavegam, udara upashtavegam. Etan veganyo visuheta giraha, sarvam apimam, pratyam sasishat. Vaachavegam, vaachavegam is the, is the urge to speak. Hmm vaachavegam, manasa, manasa vegam, manasa vegam is the urges of the mind, right? I want to do this, I want to do that, I want to get this pizza now for eating, right? The mind demands a lot of things from us. Are we able to control the mind or are we giving in to the mind like that? Vaachavegam, manasa krodevegam, krode is when, when what the manasa demands, if you don't get it, then it will lead to krode, right? The urges of anger. Hmm and then you also saw everything can be dovetailed in the service of the Lord, like Hanumanji. He dovetailed his anger in service of Lord Ram. Arjuna is dovetailing his anger in service of Lord Shri Krishna by fighting the battle like that, right? Everything, speech, how do we dovetail? By talking Krishna kata, by singing the bhajans of the Lord, right? And then mind, how do we, how do we dovetail the mind? Mantrayati iti mantra, by mantra meditation process, by chanting Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, Ram Ram, Hare Hare. We can control the urges of the mind, right? So ma, 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 what is that, maachavegam, manasa krodevegam. And then three more senses, what are those? Jibaavegam, udara upashtavegam. That means the two functions of the tongue we saw, one is to vibrate and the other is to taste palatable foodstuffs. The first urge to speech, we saw how by talking about Krishna by singing nice vishnava bhajans to the pleasure of the Lord. In that way, we control our urge to speak, right? I endowed it in Krishna's service. And the other one is to honor only Krishna prasadham and that too we spoke about sanctioned, sanctified and regulated. Our regulated times, particular times and quantity also regulated. In that way, our jiba or our tongue is controlled. And then udara upasta, udara, udara is the not overeating. In that way, we control our, the urges of the belly. And genital is to, is to engage in sexual activities only for the propagation of Krishna conscious children, like that we saw. And then only when somebody is able to control these six urges, one can make disciples all over the world, right? And you also saw our first disciple is our body, our mind, our senses. When our mind and body and what do you call the senses act according to what, what I tell them to do, right? I have to get up in the morning at brahmamurta. I want to chant a minimum sixteen rounds of Hare Krishna Amitra during brahmamurta. I want to honor only Krishna prasadham like that. When it's dictated to the mind, the body and the senses, they are aligned to what is being told to them. Then we are properly situated. And then we spoke about, we were in text number two, talking about atyahara prayashascha prajalpaniyam agrha. Janasangaschala ollyamcha, shadhyat bhaktir, vinashyati. Atyahara, we spoke about overeating and also over endeavoring, right? We spoke about an example wherein a person was getting forty-five thousand. So I get fifty thousand, he worked another two hours extra, he got back pain, he got spondylitis and then he gave that five thousand to the doctor, right? So did he gain anything? No, no, but he lost something. What did he gain? He gained something also. What did he gain? The back pain, right? That's what we saw. And then prayashascha, prayashascha means to over endeavor for things, right? Uh overeating and over collecting things. Prayashascha is over endeavoring for material things, right? That's where the example fits. And then prajalpaniyam agrha, prajalpa means to talk about materialistic things, to gossip about people. Niyama agrha, niyama agrha, that means we saw that there are two meanings to this niyama agrha. One is niyama agrha, agrha means to reject the rules and regulations. Hmm that is, these are regulated principles of freedom we saw, right? Because it's going to enable us to attain that freedom of going back to the spiritual world. It's going to liberate us from this bondage and though, and in that way, these are all principles of freedom. The other one is niyama agrha. Agrha means what? I'm, I'm very enthusiastic to follow these principles, but I am not attached to the spirit. I am simply attached to the, the, you know, the verbal words. That means what? I practice devotional service, but it is not to attain Krishna prema. I'm practicing this devotional service because, you know, it gives me sense gratification when people praise me. Oh, you know so many slogans. Oh, you are, you are chanting the verses very nicely. Oh, this, that, whatever may be, our, our need, ah that is getting fulfilled by doing this, following these regulations. Oh, you're doing nirjala fasting, right? It boosts our ego. So some of us do it, right? So in that way, if you are doing it, then it means niyama agrha. Hmm that means, that means we are doing rules and regulations, but not for the right reason. That is niyama agrha. Janasanga, janasanga means I'm associating with materialistic people. Associate with materialistic people like we saw in Bhagavat Gita also, right? Jana, uh what is that, what is that, what did we see? Uh yeah, if I, I am the average of the people that I associate with, right? Whatever is their consciousness is going to come back to me, right? We should talk about the committee examples, right? Whatever is required for us to do in the office, in the society, in wherever we are, we are going, right? We, we just do what is bare essential and then we come back to the association of sadhusanga. And then lolliam, lolliam means what? Trying to, trying to get more and more of materialistic things. Hmm these six things, what do they do? Uh these six things make us destroy our bhakti, right? And then our Prabhupada was also mentioning about performance of dharma. The meaning of dharma we saw is the essential characteristic of something, right? Sugar is to sweetness, liquidity is to water, similarly service is to soul, right? Either we serve the Lord, either we serve God or we serve dog. Hmm like this is what Prabhupada explains in one lecture, right? Service we have to do because that is our nature. But then either we can serve the Lord or we can serve a dog, right? Those who are, those we've seen, that those who don't have children, what do they do? They, they try to get a dog or a cat or something and they repose their love on them, right? Instead of doing all of that, that is also temporary, right? Are we going to get eternal pleasure? I know one of my relatives, you know, she had a dog and then the dog suddenly died and then, you know, there was so much shocker, right? Because the entire, most of the time was spent in serving the dog and then the dog is no more, it seems like there is no purpose in life, right? Had that effort, had that love, had that time been spent in building a relationship with the supreme lord and either in the form of archivigraha or in the serving the archivigraha form of the lord or in hearing or simply chanting Hare Krishna. Then, then so much of benefit is acquired that can never be destroyed by anything in this material world, right? And then lolliya, lolliya means we saw that particular example, right? That you know, in case there is a basket full of grains, right? Uh if a bird comes there, the bird will just peck on few grains and then the bird will leave. But what if a man comes? Man comes, he will, he will take as much grains as possible immediately and then later on he will bring a truck also. Ah agay, vahap hai dochar sack padhe hain. Abhi jitna mujhse, like how much more I could take, I have taken. But now let's take a truck and get all the sacks, right? That is over endeavoring, that is lolliam. That means I want more and more of the materialistic things. I want things that will make me happy, right? That is pure material consciousness, isn't it? And then we saw about what is the correct utility, right? It is neither, like we, we spoke about, what did we speak about? Uh that, yeah, if there is a hundred rupee note lying on the, lying on the road, right? So but the first person, what does he do? Oh, chaga, then I'm not going to touch it, right? Because it's not mine, he goes away. And the other, the other person, he picks it up and walks away with that hundred dollars, right? Oh, this is my money. Hmm but third person, he actually identifies, oh, okay, for example, I think it's a purse lying, I think there was example. The person picks up the purse, sees the visiting card is there, who it belongs to, returns it, right? You also saw the example of a child who is lost in the mela, right? Somebody gives him, you know, balloon, somebody gives him samosas, that is only, you know, entertaining the child for some time and then the child again starts crying. Hmm so in this way, who can give us eternal benefit? Our, somebody who takes us back home back to Godhead, somebody who connects us with Krishna, the guru, the spiritual master, the vartma pradarsita guru we call, the person who tells us first about Krishna consciousness. He said to be our vartma pradarsita guru, we need to be eternally grateful to that person because that person has actually brought us to Krishna consciousness, right? That person has told us the wealth of this world, the resources, the skills, whatever else we have, right? Manasa deho deho, jo ke chumoro, arpilu tuva pade, nandakishore. Somebody has taught us that and we need to be grateful and then we need to continue in that way. Alright, so let's go ahead and read. Have we finished this verse today? Who will read? Nagavini Mataji, are you available? Okay, Lila Nandini Mataji, you have not read today, go ahead. The wealth of the world. Hare Krishna. Than the verse, yeah.
The wealth of the world should not be, sorry, the wealth of the world should be used for the welfare of all living entities for that is the plan of mother nature. Everyone has the right to live by utilizing the wealth of the Lord. When people learn the art of scientifically utilizing the Lord's property, they will no longer encroach upon one another's rights. Then an ideal society can be formed. The basic principle for such a spiritual society is stated in the first mantra of Shrim upanishad. Isso upanishad. Esha vasyam vidam sarvam et kincha jagat, jagat tiyam jagat, tena etek tena bunjida ma grida akshat sidh danam. Everything, any animate or in any way that is within the universe is controlled and owned by the Lord. One should therefore accept only those things necessary for himself which are set aside as his quota and should not accept other things, other, other things knowing well to whom they belong. Krishna conscious devotees know very well that this material world is designed by the complete arrangement of the Lord to fulfill all the necessities of life for all living beings without their having to encroach upon the life or rights of one another. This complete arrangement efforts affords the proper quota of wealth for everyone according to his real needs and thus everyone may live peacefully according to the principle of plain living and high thinking. Unfortunately, materialists who have neither faith in the plan of God nor any aspiration for higher spiritual development misuse their God-given intelligence only to augment their material possessions. They devise mini-systems such as capitalism and materialistic communism to advance their material position. They are not interested in laws of God or in a higher goal. Always anxious to fulfill their unlimited desires for sense gratification, they are conspicuous by their ability to exploit their fellow living beings. When human society gives up this elementary false enumerated by Srila Rupa Goswami, that atyahara etc. All enmity will cease between men and animals, capitalists and communists and so forth. In addition, all problems of economic or political maladjustment and instability will be solved. This pure consciousness is awakened by the proper spiritual education and practice offered scientifically by the Krishna conscious movement. This Krishna conscious movement offers a spiritual community that can bring about a peaceful condition in the world. Every intelligent man should purify his consciousness and rid himself of the above mentioned six hindrances to devotional service by taking wholehearted shelter of this Krishna conscious movement. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. Very bold. Thank you so much, Mataji. So in this way, so in this way, we come to the end of the second verse, very, 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 very crystal clear, Prabhupada's purport, right? As long as we want to possess more and more and more of the things of this material world, the more and more we will get entangled in capitalism, materialistic communism, whatever be the terminologies. We are going to get caught up in janmam, rityujara and yadi, right? As long as we want to advance materially, we will get caught up more and more, like Prabhupada says in that beautiful lecture. We get more and more entangled in the complexities of material nature, right? But then what is the mood? However, if we have to associate with like-minded devotees, that is why Iskorn has been formed. International certified Krishna consciousness. In this way, when we associate with like-minded devotees, when we serve the Lord in the association of devotees, then we will be able to rid ourselves of these six hindrances. What are those six hindrances? Atyahara, prayashascha, prajalpaniyam agrha, janasangaschala ollyamcha, right? These six hindrances, we can automatically get over it by taking shelter of the Krishna conscious movement, by being in the association of those devotees who are practicing very sincerely with determined, with determined faith and in this way our faith will also increase. Net of instruction ki jai, Srila Rupa Goswami ki jai, Nitaigora Premanandev, Hari Hari Bol. So we will end here. Anjanam Mataji, we will start with you in our next session. You can start reading tomorrow. Uh so let's do harinam sankirtan and also devotees can give us your darshan at the end of the session. Um wait, you are all there with us. Namah om, Vishnu padaya. Krishna preetaya bhutale. Himate bhaktive ranta. Swami Niti namine. Namaste Sarasvadegeve. Gauravani pracharine. Paschatya dishataari ne jaya. Sri Krishna Jayatanaya. Prabhu Nitya nanda. Shri Advaita gadhadara Shiva sali. Gauravakta brinna jaya. Sri Krishna Jayatanaya. Prabhu Nitya nanda. Shri Advaita gadhadara Shiva sali. Gauravakta brinna. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Ram Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Ram Rama, Hare Hare. Jaya Gauranitai jaya, Gauranitai. Gauranitai jaya, Gauranitai jaya. Radha Madhav jaya, Radha Madhav. Radha Madhav jay, Sri Radha Madhav jay. Jaya Prabhu Pad, Prabhu Pad. Ude, Udu de. Titaigora Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol, Hari Bol. Prabhupada ki jai, harinam sankirtan ki jai. Anandakoti Vaishnava Vrindki ji jai, Nitaigora Premanandev, Hari Hari Bol. Hare Krishna. So we have Milanjani Mataji joining us every day. Thank you so much. Shoba Mataji, Ramya Mataji, Sarva Ho Peshri Mataji, Sindhu Mataji, Manimala Mataji, Kapral Kavali Mataji, Anjana Mataji. Okay, our regular devotees only today. Alright. Hare Krishna. Thank you all for joining in. Vanchakal Puthrubiyascha. Kripasindu Bheevichar Patita Nam, Pavane Bheevyo, Vaishnave Bheevyo, namo namaha. Anandakoti Vaishnava Vrindki ji jai, Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada. Shri La Guru Devi ki jai, Nitaigora Premanandev. Hari Hari Bol, Hare Krishna. So if anyone wants to ask anything, anyone has any query or anyone has, wants to share any relations, then you can do so. Thank you, Manimala Mataji, Dhankavat Pranam. Okay, Mahashmi Mataji, okay, fine.
Hare Krishna Mataji. I have a question. Yeah, in the second chapter of Bhagavad Gita where it was written that, you know, people are attaining, I mean going, endeavoring for heavenly planets to have somrasa. So by drinking somrasa, they become immortal. So what does that immortal mean? Because even as we read further, we know that, you know, people who are going to heavenly planets also, they come back to earthly planets after exhausting their punya karmas. So how does that work there?
Yeah, so immortal means like, that's what, that's an illusion again, right? Even you know, because we know that the people in heavenly planets, they stay for many, many, very, very long duration. So it looks like immortal. But Avramabhanaloka, Kunaravarti, you know Arjuna, right? Even Brahma, Brahma has a lifespan which is like four hundred thirty-four million ninety, four thirty-four billion ninety million years. It looks like immortal, right? Because he lives for such a long time. But yet, after that, this thing is, all the credits are gone. Kshene punya martia lokam visanti, right? They come back to this material world. So yeah, that's all.
Okay, okay. Thank you Mataji. Hare Krishna.
Thank you so much. Hare Krishna. Rantraakshri mat bhagavat Gita ki jai, Jagat Guru Shri La Prabhupada.